6:06 PM. Welcome, Happy New Year. And we're going to start off like we usually do and we'll go to announcements with our principal, Mr. Rob Scully.
Yes, welcome everybody. It's great to be back. The principal's report. We had a shortened December and we're just back, so it's relatively brief but has a couple of important things on it that I'll spend some time and feel free to interrupt if you have questions. As usual, the upcoming events, on the right-hand side, it's eight degrees yesterday and it's hard to think of the end of the school year, but whenever we see the yearbook ad, it always makes us think that the end of the year is just around the corner, so we're keeping our eye on the warmer days. And a couple of other things in there. In the upcoming events, the community council meetings and there's the climbing in the mini-gym that helps winter sessions, so a few folks had asked, that believe it or not are tuning in, mentioned, hey, you never mentioned the upcoming event, so I just wanted to highlight and make sure we're seeing that right-hand margin where some important things are highlighted. Also, thank yous to the PTSA. The PTSA is committed this year to doing lots of good work and supportive work for us, including speakers. So, the presentation Understanding the Teenage Green was really well attended and we just wanted to say thank you to that group for becoming a real vibrant part of our communication plan this year. And Carl Benavides and Kim Whitehead, the holiday concert, if you didn't have a chance to see it, you missed a great, great show and Carl has taken on new roles this year and Kim Whitehead has also joined us for the first year and boy was it worth it, it was a wonderful show, so thanks to those folks. Couple of updates, SAT. Leadership representatives attended the workshop redesigned SAT suite of assessment overview, the workshop concentrating on reasons for the SAT redesign, college board systems for support, test overview as well as additional issues. And the links, if you had a chance to navigate through those, I hope you got some sense of the new SAT. And it's really actually a very big shift that came upon us quickly. There's lots of reasons to be excited about it and I'll share just a few. It wasn't until November that it was finalized, that the state would pay for all juniors to take the SAT once, making it our accountability assessment in place of S-Back. So, S-Back, we had it for its one year. We knew that there was some discussion about this when we signed on for PACE and if you remember, we were excited about the PACE initiative, someday, we were thinking three, four, five years in the future. Our accountability system and our assessment of how we're doing with the students would be our pace and a redesigned SAT. Two years ago, our hope was maybe four or five years and it's happened already, so we're only a couple of years out and the SAT has replaced the smarter balanced. And it is a redesigned SAT that is much more aligned with the standards that we're doing work around redesigning our curriculum for. So, there's always been that thought about, you know, the SAT sometimes kind of being in a vacuum happens Saturday morning, you know, the juniors take it and it's separate, almost incidental to the instruction. Now, it's really embedding itself into our culture. They've done a wonderful job of supporting students, as I said, New Hampshire, one of the few states that's paying for the students to take it. The SAT, the college board folks have joined with Khan Academy to create amazing free online resources. Our students took the redesigned PSAT in the fall. Students can log on to their Khan Academy accounts and their PSAT scores will be logged, will be transferred in and individually designed practice assessments will be created for them, targeting where they were at in the PSAT. We met with our coordinators on Monday to build some capacity of their understanding. As I said, it's happening March 2nd. It was voted on November and just in December, we started getting the information from the portal, so it's a very short amount of time to shift culture, to prepare students for a new assessment. Our coordinators were wonderful. We met trying to make sure, as I said, we were building some capacity there. We've spoken previously about targeting professional development, this is one of those examples. We asked coordinators to attend specific workshops and they put together a trainer model today and our faculty meeting today was a coordinator and our specialists and our coaches leading our entire faculty through the understanding and appreciation stage of what the new SAT looks like. Next Wednesday, departments will pick that work up and they'll start having discussions around how we can support students and get them in line with the new SAT and all the resources available to them. Because as I said, it is what we hoped for in the PACE initiative, it's what we've hoped for just in assessments in general. It will reflect what we're teaching students, who are not teaching to the test, so lots of reasons to be excited about it. It'll be a little bit more organic and natural as we go through the years, but in the meantime, November, we found out about it, December, we got the resources and March, we're taking it. So, we're going to build in some kind of direct instruction and use advisory. Students are very savvy and they're already on some of these sites already, but we want organizationally to make it clear to the teachers, this is the ninth, 10th, 11th, 12th initiative, not just, as I said, kind of in the past with the SAT, it's been that junior thing that happened Saturday morning. So, we're excited about it because it's part of the new accountability and we're excited about it because we have some authentic and really kind of valid data to use to see how we're doing with our, with our new curriculum redesign and things like that. So, that, as I said, I want to pause at that, at that point because it's actually a really, really exciting new news. And teacher leader effectiveness. Thanks to Christine, she sent out an email to folks recently, all the teachers involved in the tripod survey, which is a student survey and kind of looking at more of that 360-degree, you know, observation model. And all the teachers are involved in that pilot. There were just some questions and some outline of what to expect. Teachers will proctor their own class and class sections, teachers survey, one section of students and the data administration. Teachers will choose a date, we're hoping December, but there's some time in this month. Parent letter, I, you know, connected that, I linked that to you folks to look. Administrative guidelines about how to administer and as I said, Christine's been great support and resource for that. And the results will be held until paper surveys are processed and those results are available. So, the teacher leader effectiveness update is around that new part of that tripod survey tool and the pilot program. And then notes of interest. Kathy was nice enough to compile a collection of articles, so if you're keeping tabs on the work Southheagan's been doing with the PACE initiative, great, if you haven't, there was a chance to read some articles, some local, some national. And as I said, the New Hampshire is really gaining a profile nationally, most recently with the reauthorization of No Child Left Behind. The ESSA talks about giving permissions now for the state to develop more locally grown assessments. Again, like a couple of years ago, we talked about hoping that this would be the climate in a couple of years. Now, David?
Take a breath once in a while, Rob.
Okay.
The teacher leader effectiveness thing, you know, I love the idea of the 360 review. You know, we talked about this a long time ago. And, but how is it going to be used? What is the, you know, I think it's one thing to implement it and I think that's, you know, that took some, a lot of work, I'm sure it did. But how's it going to be used? How does it, how's a teacher to use the data? Does administration use the data?
Yeah, there's been some, I don't know if Christine wanted to jump in, she can give you, I could give you a kind of final.
Are you talking about student feedback?
Yeah, and the parent feedback too, parental feedback.
The tripod survey that we're piloting this year, it's a student survey, so it's not a parent survey side, it's only for students to provide feedback to their teachers. So, we have 28 teachers across the SAU that are involved in the pilot. They attended one training, half-day session to find out more about tripod and to understand and to really get a sense of the questions that are asked and how the reporting will come back to the teacher so they can reflect. So, they're administering the survey either in December or beginning of January, they'll get their results, they'll have a chance to kind of examine their results before we get together and then they're going to meet again. Teachers are going to go through a whole reflective process to really look deeply at their results, determine an area of focus that they want to focus on, receive some professional development in that area and then they will, their students will also take the survey again later in the school year. It's not really meant to be a pre and post-test, but just more data and a chance to like really further, you know, get further feedback from students on certain areas.
Is it intended to be input to a performance review or not? I mean, it could be.
Yeah, that's a great question.
It could be not.
It can be used either way. So, tripod can be used solely for professional development or it can be used as part of an evaluation. At this point, we're exploring the use of it just for professional development because we feel that it's kind of a scary thing, student surveys for teachers. And to jump right in and say this is used in an evaluation is not the best way to roll tripod out or just any student survey out. It's better to roll it out, have teachers have some experience with it, really reflect on it. We'd rather have teachers say, and some teachers have said this to us, that they would want the results in an evaluation. We'd rather start that way than saying, this is part of your evaluation. It's kind of uncomfortable moving in that direction and all of the research we did and all of the work we did really supported the use at first for professional development, make sure the tool is the right tool, make sure the feedback is helping, really have teachers, you know, really reflect on their practice and make sure it's meaningful and then look at whether it's appropriate to move it into the evaluation system side.
So, it's not decided at this point, but it could be?
So, at this point, it's decided to only use it for professional development, but at any point down the road, our committee could reexamine that and make a recommendation to move it into the evaluation side.
Good.
And I know Steve has been a big part in this, I don't know if there was anything I left out.
Everything you said.
Okay.
If I remember correctly, the tripod, when they presented, the committee said that some of the districts have been using it for a while, it's, we're starting to move into using it for value to purposes, not just for development.
And I think there's some, one group we didn't talk about, the students and the students' experience with it and it's become part of the culture and you can trust the feedback a little bit more as, not student training per se, but student experience with it.
And, you know, we are using this K-12, which is really exciting and with the little, the younger students, it's done in small groups and it's paper pencil and it's read aloud to them and they have a chance to, you know, ask questions if they need to and someone else has to proctor the kindergarten, first and second grade surveys, but we are trying it out even that young. So, it really is a pilot to get feedback, back from both teachers and from students to determine, you know, what would this look like full scale if we use this full scale and how can we develop a process that would be meaningful for everyone involved.
Does that answer your questions, Dave?
Yep.
Thank you, Christine.
You're welcome.
We'll save your card.
So, as I mentioned, I hope you get a chance to read those articles and there are more coming and we're setting up through the communications team, a more regular rolling out of the articles as I said, that, you know, the stars have really aligned. We've always had a really encouraging Department of Education for the work that we've done locally in this district, the recent state policy that's been developed, giving, you know, real, you know, kind of validating the work of the Department of Ed. And then most recently, as I said, at the federal level, the reauthorization of the No Child Left Behind Act is kind of that last star aligning to really make us feel comfortable. And I shared this with the board because a couple of years ago, we asked for permission to get into the PACE initiative with these hopes and they're happening very much like we wanted and even more quickly. And so, we'll be sharing articles, you know, as I said, local or national level where that work. If I'm not mistaken, the reauthorization, the ESSA mentions the New Hampshire work specifically as one of the models that the rest of the country could look forward to as they are looking to do their work to create the accountability system. So, when they mention New Hampshire, we are proud of the role we're playing in that.
One of them did, or more than, one or more did mention New Hampshire, actually, the work that New Hampshire's doing.
So, as I said, that's a, you know, a testament to the faith the district put in to that initiative and we just want to make sure you feel comfortable, you're getting your money's worth. And then some congratulations to the following students on their selection to All-State Festival Ensembles, Naomi Cohen, Katie G., and I practiced that too.
G?
Yeah. No, not G. Yeah. And Emily Liz. So, thank you.
I was hoping you would tell us how you're doing hamburgers for $2 out of locally, local beef.
That is because.
That's how easy it is.
Yeah, that is because, I don't know how we did it, somehow when we lost Danielle, we replaced her with John, with not missing a bean. Somehow when we lost Jim, we replaced with Mark and it's just amazing.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's great to be able to do that.
It's amazing what they're doing and one of the groups during the Advisory Finance Committee meetings, there was lots of discussion to get who was on that subcommittee, but it's an impressive group, you know, from the district level and in the building and what they're doing and how they're doing it cost-effectively and healthy.
Yeah, that's great.
So, you know, when we lost Danielle, we were like, I don't know what are we going to do and so we got a John, so it's really nice to, yeah. So, that's my general answer, John and Mark is my answer to that, how we're doing it.
You wanted to add something, Peter, too?
I just wanted to add for the public, Rob talked a little bit about PACE, Performance Assessment for Competency Education. So, the high school is at tier one, I mean, the beginning group and is really going great guns. So, also, we have Amherst Middle School, which is at tier two, so they're moving into the PACE movement. And our elementary schools are at tier one, so there are three tiers statewide. So, all of our districts are involved with PACE and moving forward, so happy to say that and proud to say that. And all this led by the work of Southheagan and now others have jumped on, so very pleased about that.
Steve, did you have questions?
Not a question. My answer for Chris, because I asked John Lash essentially the same question about, apparently the vendor is very committed to education and so we're getting very aggressive bulk pricing as an educational institution. That's how we get it, an affordable cost.
All right. Any other questions or comments about the principal's report? All right, that brings us to the community council report and Ms. Elizabeth Purvis. And Elizabeth, we have the academic support proposal and minutes in our packet, so that's, you don't have to address that unless you want, unless there's something you want to add. You can just give us an update and what else community council's been up to?
So, our last meeting we just had on Monday, it was, it was night meeting, so we got a lot done and we've been recently discussing a proposal brought forward by Alex Glavin, who was here at the last meeting. And his proposal is to create a Division III. Now, what that means is we have Division I and Division II, both with students and faculty. So, Division I and II are on either side of the building for the faculty. And then Division I is sophomores and freshmen and Division II is juniors and seniors. And Division III, what his idea is to create an alternative activities group because usually council handles a lot of the school activities, like we used to handle semi-formal dances and we did homecoming this year as well as Fang Fest. And what he wants to do is to move activities as to more of a subgroup of council, because we usually have an activities committee, but this year we don't. So, his idea was to make this subgroup where it's not only council doing all the work for these activities, but that we have active involvement, not only from students, but also from staff and other faculty members. So, the idea is to make it more open and inclusive to all students because many people, many students, at least some of them that I know, think they can't get involved as much in Fang Fest because they're not on council. So, we've been discussing this for about three or four weeks and we voted on it on Monday and it passed. So, Alex's implementation plan is to start with Fang Fest and open it up to everybody. And this is a way to not only increase the amount of community we have at Southheagan, but also to make it so that students are more involved.
Great. Jeanie?
Yeah, Liz, can I just ask, I didn't get to go Monday night because we had a meeting, but I just wondered how the concerns about the structure of this particular new, how would those fears allay?
So, Will Fox actually made an amendment to the initial proposal and the initial proposal was to just have a liaison from community council to Division III. But Will's amendment was to have a, have a small, almost board of council members elected to, to Division III from each grade. So, you have about one member, one or two members from each grade and they make up a kind of go-to board in the event that there's a decision that needs to be made. Because if you have a lot of students together, they could potentially all have different ideas and not a lot of work may get done. So, the idea is to have this board so that if something important to make a final decision needs to be done, they're the go-to board so that a decision does happen in a timely fashion.
Any other questions for Liz? No? All right, thank you very much, Liz. And as I said to Liz, the proposal itself and the minutes for the academic support were in your packets. I know last time, we didn't discuss it or vote on it because we hadn't really had a chance to read it through. It was the first time a lot of the board members were seeing it, so assuming you've had a chance now to, to read it through and read the minutes, does anyone have any comments or discussion on that?
I just had a few clarifying questions, I don't know who can answer this, but I, I just, there was, there was mention of something called Saber Support, Learning Commons, Academic Support. And I just wondered how those differed and.
Yeah, I think of, academic support is the current term for the current model. Learning Commons is a location where teachers can, that teachers can use for their intervention or their smaller group instruction. And Saber Support is the new term for the emerging model that we're piloting at the ninth grade. So, the current academic support model is almost kind of like a pull-out, students who are identified during a period with a learning specialist. The ninth grade model is that population plus some other students who would benefit from it are being served by their specific team teacher whose third is the Saber Support class. And a Saber Support class, for example, would be Team 9A is a collection of students. They would look at data proactively, say Johnny, Suzie haven't been doing so well in the science quizzes, you'll be with Vince on Tuesday, Thursday, in his room or here to do some pre-teaching or re-teaching. And so, the new model that we're doing, that we're, we're creating, the team came up with a, like that, the Saber Support as a term. So, it's academic support is the, it's the current model, Saber Support is what we're branding the pilot program and the Learning Commons is a location that that work can take place.
Do you have a question, Dave?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, actually. Is academic support graded? Is it just a pass fail or is it, what, how's it handled?
Yeah, it's credit bearing and I believe Meg, it's a pass fail, right.
Okay, so, there's a, one of the comments and pros and cons was create more equity. I don't quite get what that, what that refers to, equity across student, the student community. Why is it, why is there an equity issue here if it's, if it's done graded and?
I wonder if that, was that a comment from the proposal suggested that it was?
The staff member who proposed this change, that was a comment from him and I think that is just his own personal opinion. Or there was a, two staff members, it was their own personal opinion, it would create more equity. And I believe two things or one of two things. One of the things they mentioned was that they felt that some of the juniors and seniors were using it just to get homework done, so that then, and then the other part of it was they felt that, that by not having a structured academic support, they could take another elective. However, as Meg pointed out, there are some students who cannot do that because it specifies in their IEP or 504 that they have to have an academic support. So, I think that was kind of overlooked in the proposal.
Well, I thought the distinction between a service, which is provided by a school, and, you know, a graded activity, you know, meaning a course, is the important distinction in my mind. I'm not even sure at this point why in Division I, there's credit given for this. If it's truly a service, I'm not sure, Rob, I don't understand why, is that a historical thing or is that?
If a service, do you understand the question?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a distinction made between.
But you're wondering why it's a credit bearing at all?
Yeah. Why should?
Why not beg?
It's because it takes them, so in order for them to be able to have the time in their day, to be scheduled into the academic period that they require, it takes them out of another class. And when it takes them out of another credit bearing class, it excludes them from being able to get a credit. They have really specific things that they're addressing when they're in academic support and the decision was made long before my time here, that they should receive a credit for that. That is not uncommon. The other districts that I've been in have done the same. If the child or the student has to be in that support block in order to be able to get some of the skills that they need remediation or assistance with and it takes them out of a credit bearing course and they're doing, you know, things that they need to do to be able to receive a credit, they get a credit for it.
Okay, then, thank you, Meg. I have a series of questions in there and I don't understand it small enough to really. So, then, in the, if you have an IEP or 504 and you're in this academic support, are you given projects to do? I mean, I don't understand, you know, is it specific projects that are beyond, you know, typical classroom structure that you're given?
It's not, it wouldn't be projects, it would be, for a student who's on an IEP, for example, it would be driven by the goals and objectives in their IEP and those change depending upon the need of the student. There might be a student who needs some remediation work in the area of writing, for example. And so, their academic support period might be tailored towards doing, you know, different types of writing, working on developing writing rubrics, things of that nature. Another student might need some remedial work in math, they might have a specific learning disability in math. And so, their academic support and the goals and objectives that are in their IEP might be more related to math. It's very individualized. A lot of the kids who are on our 504 plans, some have maybe some executive functioning deficits. And so, that support period is designed to help them work on putting together some strategies and learning and utilizing strategies that will help to address the executive functioning pieces. It's very different for, you know, different kiddos, which is why I was opposed to just making it a blanket statement that, you know, nobody can get credit for this without looking a little bit further. I think that the leadership team here started last spring, along with myself, to really change the way we are delivering these services to kids. The Saber Support is the beginning of that process and our hope, we always knew that we would do a year at a time, we'd start with the freshmen. Those changes have been realized this year. There are a lot of things about the changes that have been going really well, there are some. There are some things I think that we'd like to tweak. But what we'd really like is the time to continue to work on it and move it up into the sophomore, junior, and then senior classes. And eventually, ultimately...
Credit bearing or not, eventually or...
Get into what?
Credit bearing or not. Because I think David's question about it being a credit bearing experience. This new model is more intervention at the classroom level with a period that is open for students where they could access this extra intervention, not as a credit bearing experience, but to be able to be successful in their credit bearing classes. So I heard in your question too about why a credit. And as Meg said, that's, you know, it's, I don't know, carry or somebody might remember.
We're going to allow it to set up right now. Our hope is, you know, to ultimately be able to look at it. And it may not always need to be credit bearing in the future.
For all students.
We're just not there yet. And it would be premature to just say that, you know, the kids, juniors and seniors can't receive credit until we put all of the pieces into place to effect the change for all four classes.
Okay, our last question is, does this have an effect on the number of teachers required to deliver this Academic Support? And is it a budget consideration? In other words, by doing this, you would lessen the load on teachers and consequently be able to redeploy or something else?
Our ultimate hope is that we would be able to do that, yes.
Okay.
I would caution you though, and you know, my special education answers always say, start with something like, "Well, that depends." Because in some instances, I would say that a special educator would be required for certain kids to work on certain skills. That is not always the case. And I think that best practice always is for the students to receive instruction, for example, or assistance with science with their science teacher. That would be the best model and best practice. But there are some skills that require some remediation by a special educator.
But I think to get to, you know, but we're looking David, going forward as the new model, we're able to serve more students more effectively with the same amount or to do with fewer, if that makes sense.
Makes sense to me, that's one of the outcomes of this.
Yeah, so that's part of the planning. Because currently, you do have a learning specialist tied specifically to a team, tied specifically to an Academic Support. That serves a finite amount of students.
Steve?
So if I understand Rob's and Meg's answer to Dave correctly, if the Saber Support strategy continues to roll out over the next three years the way you hope it will, this proposal will be implemented?
Yeah, that's how we...
We would hope.
We're doing it.
Now, we're...
We're doing it. In a measured way, we're implementing what this proposal asks.
With any new initiative, we have to constantly go back and get feedback from the teachers who are trying to implement it. I know that the leadership team has talked with the freshman teams and the learning specialists on those teams to see, okay, what's working? What isn't? You know, there are some tweaks that will need to be made. And then there'll be some growing pains as we try and push it into, you know, the sophomore year as well. But the freshmen, you know, are now used to the model. So it will be easier for them to acclimate to the same type of a model when they're sophomores.
Jeanie?
The credit issue. What Steve has just asked you, it sounds like the credit issue will go away for juniors and seniors. Is that what you're anticipating?
In two more years or three more years, yeah. That's what I understood.
Is that correct? I would believe that for the majority of the kids that it will. I couldn't tell you 100% that it would go away for all students because we haven't quite seen or fully realized what that might look like yet. But if we can do this the way we would like to, it should. So I guess my concern is that you expressed concern that many of these special needs kids who are in Academic Support for a good reason, if this proposal goes forward, we'll miss out on some credits. So I don't know how that's going to be different with this Saber... Right, so in the past, we had never really integrated that support period into the student's day. We are doing that now for the freshmen. We're sort of embedding it into their day. Now, we haven't really wrapped our heads around, and there's more work to be done with regard to how that would look like, what that would look like for juniors and seniors. And so while I think that there are ways that we could embed that type of support into what juniors and seniors are doing now, we're not sure what that model's going to look like. So I would caution folks into believing that it will go away, that credit would go away for everybody. But I think that for the majority of the kids, if we do it correctly, it could. It would be a more embedded service that sort of threaded and integrated throughout their day. Yeah, in a perfect world, how would you like... What do you think is the best approach to this proposal? To just put it on the table and wait until we can see what happens or... I would, you know, the board certainly has the right to make the decision to approve the recommendation from the Community Council. My preference would be for you to wait and have us come back and report out to you with regard to how our work is moving forward. I have worked and spoken with the Special Education Department teachers now and have charged them with, you know, okay, let's roller sleeves up and really dive in and put together some potential models that we think would be better models and help to be part of a solution that would meet the needs of all students. And I think the leadership team again has heard them last year. This was brought up last year in the spring and we heard them. And, but Rome wasn't built in a day. I think it would be very difficult just to unroll a blanket, you know, way of doing things for all four classes. It wouldn't have been successful. We thought that the best practice would be to pilot it with the incoming freshmen and mold them and get them used to a new way of operating.
Because the other part of the context here is this also has to do with, you know, the great work Gigi and Peter have been doing with RTI and Tier 1 and Tier 2 interventions. It also has to do with the work we're doing, moving toward competency-based. It's also the work we're doing with transitioning. Our connection with the middle school, I think, is, you know, wonderful over the last few years and being more informed and, you know, collectively looking at the students who need targeted intervention or students who just need a little bit more help, our summer program, you know, the Saber Step Up. So if you think of it in percent, right now, we have a model that essentially says, all right, this profiled student goes to this class, gets that individualized help and because they're not in another class, they get credit for it because they are doing the work. It's just, again, or pre or... But that percent is probably higher than it should be if our RTI was running efficiently, if our competency-based approach, if our continued work of preparing kids and having a nice K through 12. So I think it might leave a small, small percent of students who regardless of all that intervention and that revision, might still not be able to access unless they had really deliberate, this is the period you're going for this help with. But it will really change significantly, I think. Well, the ninth grade is really excited about what it looks like because their science teachers working with science kids. And because of our learning progression work, 9B, 9A, doesn't matter. So now we've able to get more students to the table and they're able to spread their work through the entire year because Vince can work with the 9B kids, because their curriculum is more aligned. And it's, there's other context to this that brings some cohesion to this model.
It allows you to take a skill deficit that a lot of kids have and teach the skill in a really integrative way. So the science teacher can work with the history teacher and the English teacher to teach the same skill utilizing their own curriculum.
You know, I think as a member of Community Council myself, I think that Community Council, through no fault of their own, didn't have the whole perspective on the Saber Support model. You know, right now Academic Support, and this was brought up during the Community Council discussions too, if a student needs help in math and the learning specialist in there doesn't happen to be a specialist in math, well, that doesn't really, you know, sometimes help them as much as it could with something like the Saber Support model. I also agree with Meg that to make a blanket statement that no student should get credit right now when there are kids who are unable to access other classes because of their requirement of taking Academic Support, without giving us a chance to see how the pilot works, without Community Council being aware of this whole perspective. I think, you know, in my opinion, again, listening to the whole proposal and all the discussions, it might be a good idea also to maybe have Meg and/or Rob come to Community Council rather than us voting and negating their decision, even though it was only a recommendation to us. Maybe have Rob and/or Meg come to Community Council and kind of give the broader perspective, you know, to them. And, you know, as opposed to, and this is just an idea, as opposed to, you know, a vote by us either enforcing or negating their decision. I don't know how anybody feels about that, Dave?
I strongly endorse what you're saying. It seems to me that this is really not the domain of Community Council. It is really the domain of Meg and, you know, Student Services, you know, and should emanate from there. And then maybe reviewed at Community Council, but not emanate from Community Council and be reviewed by... I think you own that Meg, that's my thinking. I agree with you basically.
I'm happy to share.
What?
I'm happy to share.
No, I mean, I just think it's your domain to deal with. And, you know, for us to take action here, one way or the other, or do nothing, is, does not, doesn't fit with my thinking about this.
I'm happy to do that.
Any other thoughts or comments or suggestions?
I think that is a really good idea because I do think Community Council certainly deserves that respect, you know, to have that piece of information included in their deliberation. And the confusing thing about Community Council's purview is that they actually do have the ability to make decisions about things like this. Or at least make recommendations to the board.
Yeah, Rob has already talked about that. Both, we've talked about both changing the constitution and about changing the proposal process. Rob, you know, and the administration have come up with some ideas. Pete Gagnon on how we can change the proposal process so that the people that should see it before it goes to Executive or to the whole council, see it and give input. So I think that's a great idea also. So does everybody agree with that approach then?
Can I move that? Can we make that a motion and...
Uh, yeah. I mean, I guess we could formalize it by voting, I don't know, but yeah.
Yeah, and I think the motion, please add to this. I don't want to be the only one saying anything, but the motion should be that, you know, we defer this request and proposal to be reviewed by Director of Student Services and whatever resources you use Meg, probably your team or something like that. And that, and one element of that would be approaching Community Council and saying what you think or, you know, reviewing of them. But then you would come back to the board and make a recommendation on this.
I was going to add that maybe she comes back to the board and updates us on how the pilot program is going and how the Saber Support is going forward. Yes, so yeah. Oh, sure, sure. Well, I think... Yeah. Dave, do you want to, yeah, do you want to kind of repeat just for her? Because that was probably long to try to... Yeah, I'm not verbatim Dave, but...
That Meg, we...
To confirm the request or proposal?
We refer this to, refer this whole idea, the whole package here, basically to Meg, Director of Student Services, to review and make her recommendations, period. And she can do, you can go to the council, you can go to other teachers.
She has to go back to council though. That, I think, is essential.
Including going back, including a discussion with Community Council.
Second.
I'll second.
So Steve second? Do you have that okay? I know because we all kind of were giving a little tidbit.
Yes.
To refer the whole idea for Meg...
Director of Special Education.
To make her recommendations, including a discussion with Community Council.
Yes.
And Steve second?
Yep. Okay, any further discussion?
Well, just a clarification on the idea, what the idea is. It's, yeah, it's basically, this package has been recommended by Community Council.
The Academic Support proposal, yeah.
Right, exactly.
Academic Support model. All right, any further suggestions or discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor? Unanimous? Okay, thank you and thank you Meg and Rob. Okay, so that brings us to committee reports. And I know we're going to talk about policies later on. Or maybe, actually, depending on when the Advisory Committee is ready, we might move those up. But it doesn't have to be under committee reports, I guess. The, we could do the Stadium Field Project update right now as a committee report.
Briefly, we asked the major donor if he would defer, you know, give us an extension, I'm sorry, of a month. And they agreed. It's a family kind of thing, but they agreed. And so we have until the end of January to finish raising the money for this. The total money that's been raised is, I might have a decimal point off here or something, but $767,000, including the major donors, half a million. Jim sent out the bids, the responses, the response to the bid request. And the low bid fit in that number was 765.
Jim, do you want to come up?
As I said, 765. We raised 767 at this point and hope to raise some more. But this is an opinion, I don't know what... We're actually meeting tomorrow morning at 7:30, the committee, to sort of see where we're going to head right now. The next bid was 880, I believe. 882. To me, that seems a bit out of reach. I'm not sure we can hit that. You know, where we are now, we may be able to pull another 10, 15, 20,000. But I just, this is my gut feel, I don't know, you know. We'll find out more tomorrow, tomorrow morning. Or we'll just stay up all night, Tim, Tim and go like to a meeting. So, you know, we're at the point where we can, I mean, we have to evaluate the different proposals and see if they met the needs. And we haven't done that yet. All we've seen is basically the dollar numbers.
Well, I think Jim was going to give us some feedback on that tonight.
Dave, if you have it now?
Yeah, come on up and...
I believe that should be the board's purview to make that decision.
Well, we're not going to make any decisions whether we can raise more money or need to raise more money.
It is board's purview.
It is, of course it is.
Yes, and we do need to make a decision so that you can know how much more to raise. I think you could...
Well, the question is whether we can it as well.
Well, I think with Jim's information, hopefully we'll be able to.
Tim, do you have anything to add? I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Uh, no. My ass.
I think it's the, I think it's the other one. That's it.
Do you want to sit here?
Yeah, you have to need a microphone, yeah.
Just stand and talk.
Just stand and talk. So, to go over the bid procedure, I thought that's what we were going to, we wanted to see the full layout as far as we stood today. So, the bidding procedure was that a public notice was...
Jerry, can we hear him? Just to make sure, Jim.
Public notice, request for letters of interest in the proposed project was submitted on 11/20 for local papers to be posted on 11/22 and 11/26. There was also a public notice posted on the SAU website. Emails were requested for, emails with the request for letters of interest were sent to 22 potential vendors on 11/20. We received five letters of interest out of those 22, so we said five vendors that were interested in the project. The 22 potentials were pulled off various sites such as the Synthetic Turf Council, they're certified vendors and so forth, so that's where the list was generated. After the five were received, the bid request was sent out to them on the 11th of December requesting a response by the end of the year, 12/13, 12/31. So, the proposal review, you can see that there's the five bidders. Their basic proposals are all identical. Progress came in at 765, 632. Quirk Construction, in combination with Shaw Sports Turf, came in at 882. David White and Sons, in combination with Sprint Turf, came in at 981. Green Acres Landscape and Construction did not advise who their turf supplier was going to be, they used multiples. They came in at 986, 655. RAD Sports, and again, they didn't identify who their turf supplier would be, came in at 1.152 million. You have to understand here that we were asking for a proposal for a design-build contract. We expect that there's going to be a general contractor working with suppliers who's going to satisfy this. That's why you see a general contractor such as Quirk working with Shaw Sports, who is the turf manufacturer. Progress LLC has the whole package. They supply all the necessary operations in order to satisfy that, but they are basically a turf manufacturer also. So, yesterday, our small committee, Rob, Peter Gagnon, John Rogachow, myself, and Dick Miller, sat down and went through the proposals. We went through them several times and we came up with a recommendation that you'll see at the bottom there, that Progress LLC and Quirk Construction be called in to give presentations to the board. We do that with the understanding that all of the basic proposals are similar, the content is all similar, but there were certain things that we saw in Progress and Quirk Construction that led us to believe that they'll probably would be the better of the two vendors. Not, in place was not an issue. We weren't driven by the target we knew we had to hit. As noted in there, the selected vendors demonstrated an understanding, not only of the design-build concept and the work content that we were looking for, but included the need to work with the schools and administration directly to establish the drawing specifications, to do the survey work, the technical and designs needed to gain owner approval for the project. In other words, they presented us with what we wanted as far as baseline in the project, but they recognized, and were the only two of the group who said, "There's more to be done. We have to sit down and understand where you're coming from, you have to understand what we can supply," but they still gave us the number. They're willing to work within that number. And that's typical of design-build contracts. You can't, you don't define exactly to the minute detail what has to be done. They come back and work with you and you come up with a project that works. The elimination of the other three was based on factors who are considered an elimination of the proposal, including high bid cost was one of the considerations in eliminating certain suppliers. Incomplete proposal information, one of the suppliers gave me basically a sheet of paper that said, "Here's a number." No detail. That's after asking for a full, you know, proposal, basically. We had, there's some of these vendors that never showed up on-site for visit, and some of them that came on-site and saw John or I and were pretty much looked over what they were working with to start the project and how their project was going to interface with what we did last year. So, there was a lot more interest generated there, a lot more understanding. So, that's basically why we came up with the two that we recommended. And I think as, if, if I sat here and tried to talk about the detail of the project, you would have questions that I have no expertise in and can't answer. They have to answer their own questions. We had some baseline things about turf that were in there, infomix, all the things that had been discussed in the past as far as baseline. And so, everybody, everything was developed and priced based on certain baseline factors, but it's not the final word. Things can change as we look at the design and the specifications and so forth when we sit down with whoever we choose as a vendor. So, that's about what I had.
Jenny?
Yeah, I just wondered, Jim, if you could, have either of these companies done something close by that we could, we could see?
Well, Quirk Construction along with Shaw just did Exeter, so Merkel or Exeter. I'd have to look at the list. There's, University of New Hampshire is, I don't know which one, one of, they did some work for them. Lot more work done in Massachusetts than north of Massachusetts. Little, very little in Maine, a lot in Connecticut. So, yeah, we may have, we may be able to arrange a site visit to look at it. And I think Dick Miller would be happy with that probably, too. But I know he's also done that. He's been looking at turf when he has the opportunity to do that.
One of the things that we use as kind of criteria was northeast. Folks have done work in the northeast because, you know, the climate has to do with, you know, weather and that type of thing. One or both, as Jim said, some New Hampshire, Exeter, University of New Hampshire, but definitely scattered through Mass, Tufts, northeastern, you know, so within a drive home.
Dave, your question?
Yeah, Jim, the DNs, any option for us at all not to do them? One, could it possibly bring Quirk into line with...
It's not going to be a significant enough difference. One option often offered by one of the vendors was elimination of one D end, savings is $13,000. So, it's not significant enough to make the overall change.
Is there a negotiating room? You know, for instance, if we decide that Quirk Construction is the better company after meeting with them, and they know that we had a lower bid, do you feel like there might be negotiating room? Are you unsure of that?
I certainly can't guarantee it, but I don't think there's any reason we can't sit down and say, "How do we achieve a lower price? Where can we cut some corners?" We don't want to minimize the quality ultimately, but there may be some items that they identify that could short that that. I know the interface, the interface of the new drainage system that we put in with the new track, or, excuse me, the new field drainage pad that they're going to put in is always in question. They don't have knowledge of how that interface is going to look. That may be one opportunity that once they come and take a good look and we discuss it, we may be able to take some excavation costs out of it. Another area, and, excuse me, Rob, it costs us money to save the loam.
Oh, it did cost?
That's actually a factor. Most of them were concerned with how much loam we wanted to save because they won't save it, they will probably just excavate as deep as they have to go for the sub-base and the base installation and dispose of the top soil along with everything that's underneath it. So, if you can imagine it, it's like removing two layers of dirt. You're preserving the top loam and relocating it, and then you're going back over that whole field again and digging some more. So, instead of doing it once, you're doing it twice.
I thought it was going to be a saving. You have to cut away.
But there's, there's items like that that can result in cost savings if we say, "Okay, forget the loam, take it wherever you want to, let's hit it done." But I think that between Sprint Turf, who is very strong about moving, about picking up business with us, especially since they did Exeter, in combination with Quirk, and Progress also has made some pretty strong gestures that they want to, definitely want to do this project. And I think that's reflected in their prices. They want to, they want to do this.
Did the 40, were you referring to the $43,000 we spent out of last year's budget on the, on the, on the track? Is that what you're referring to, Jim? Maybe that will help save some money.
The drainage.
Yeah, the drainage, I'm sorry.
I don't actually recall where that cost came from, where that, what that was paid out of.
No, we wrote it to...
That was, that was an, that was an, the 43 was in excess of what the project cost.
Correct. Yeah, but it was, but my understanding of it was that it was to do something so we could eventually, but we knew that this turf field offer was going to be made. We had insight to that, I guess. And what the proposal was, was that was going to be something that was going to save some money if we ever did it in turf field, right?
Yeah.
Primarily because if you, if we didn't put in the curbing and drainage, we would have to disrupt a new track that's been wrote in. So, it was to, it was to save that loss or that difficulty in trying to lay drainage in a new field within a brand-new track without disturbing the brand-new track. Right now, we've got curbing and drainage already installed. The track will not be impacted at all by this change.
I think Dave's question is, will that save us money? Do they know that we already have the curbing and drainage in place?
They know.
They do offer...
So, let's get those bids as well.
Yeah, they've seen it. But I'm saying that...
But tie it to it.
That what they have to put in has to interface with that, and I don't think they totally know...
How they'll do that, yeah.
What they're going to run into when they do that. There's some assumptions they make, even in the base soil. They don't know what kind of subsoil we've got here, even though we know it's sand. They make, they have to make some assumptions, and like you or I would do, maybe we're a little on the high side to make sure that we've got our, all our ducks covered, ducks in the hole. So, I think there's a very good potential for talking to them, saying, "You look like the bidder. If we can decide on one, we want to sit down and talk about costs now."
Yeah.
It's a good possibility.
When could that be done, Jim? I mean, we're, you know, we're going to be meeting tomorrow with the fundraising committee and really got to...
I would say sometime next week. We want to give them enough time to get their people together and get in here. So, first of next week, probably.
So, would you guys suggest, Jim, Tim, and Dave, I guess, I would say, as a committee and Director of Buildings and Grounds, would you suggest that the committee meet with the two different bidders and then bring a recommendation back to the board?
I think it should be all parties. I don't think it's, unless the board doesn't want to do that, that's the only...
Well, our next meeting is February 4th, I think, and so we could have a special meeting so the whole board could meet with the, but that's going to be tough with public hearing and deliberative, so that's why I thought maybe it would be easier if the committee met with the bidders and came back with a recommendation. Because we've got about six meetings between then and a board meeting and public hearings and...
Yeah, and we only asked for a 30, 30 a month extension.
30-day?
Right, to the 31st, so we need to know before, we need to...
Well, can, is it...
No, no, I'm saying, you're, you're putting the onus on us. I'm thinking that's more likely to be a good thing, not a good thing, but the only way to get it done.
But you have to ask for the extension to our next board meeting.
Is that, sorry?
You'd have to then ask for an extension to February 4th for our next board meeting. I mean, which, I think that's understandable that we're not meeting until then. I think the donors should probably understand that, that the board's not meeting again until then, unless we do it like right after the public hearing or something. But in the meantime, I think it would probably make the most sense for the committee to meet with the bidders. Does anybody have any thoughts on that, Tim?
They can invite the board members to that meeting.
Well, we'd have to post it if it's, yeah.
We would, if, yes, if board members were to attend, but the committee could take the lead on it, but, but any board member who might want to attend.
But we wouldn't have a month's notice, though, I don't know if that's a problem?
Yeah, we'd need just 24 hours' notice.
Okay.
I know the vendors will be available anytime you set a time. Yes, they want the business.
Yeah, well...
Yeah, I already did say, I already did.
The netting that is, was in the athletic budget that we pulled out because we wanted to be part of this project is not included in any of these bids, of course.
Right. True.
So, that's going to be an added cost above the, any of these potential numbers. Right, so...
But I believe Dick said that was like $6,000.
That's 1,000, 6,000 aside.
I mean...
But, you know, there may be other sources for that. I think the, the...
Yeah, I'm not saying these guys to do it, but I'm saying we have to account for that extra cost. It's not just that number, it's that plus 12 or whatever the final number is for the netting and other ancillary parts of the equipment.
Well, you know, I, we talked about including that in the cost of the turf field because it wasn't supposed to cost the taxpayers any money, but honestly, that's a good idea no matter what. I mean, to, in order for the community members to use the track, you know, anytime in the day or night that they want to, whether we have turf or not, it's a good idea, you know, to have those nets. So, I'm not sure if I agree that, and we can talk about this if it needs to be included in that bid.
We did leave that in the budget because, and the Advisory Finance Committee also agreed that this is a safety issue and a liability issue. We should have had...
I thought we took it out at one point.
I thought we did, too, yeah.
We took out the, well, your changes are here, but...
So, now it's back in?
No, we didn't take it out. We, the changes, we didn't include that because it is, it is a safety and a liability issue. There are many, many fields that have that now. We just were unaware of it until this time because we were looking at the turf field. But people who don't have turf fields, people, yes, they use them everywhere, and they, they really are a very good idea, so, yes, so we only took out the soccer flags and the little storage unit. That's what came out of the budget.
Okay. And one of the bids, I think, actually...
Did include it?
Included footings.
Footings for us.
For the netting?
Yeah.
Okay.
But not one of those.
It wasn't?
And that's part of what we can discuss, whether it was a vendor, is that when you're putting netting in, can you put in footings for us while you're doing the rest of the curbing? It's a small installation.
Yeah.
But it's an added item, just give and take going through this, so...
Okay. Jenny?
But what about the maintenance equipment? Where is that? The maintenance equipment? So, we have budgeted, not knowing that we would have, whether we would have the, this happen or not, and in honesty, the savings that will accrue if this does happen for our field maintenance will make up that amount. So, so we budgeted as if we'd have to look after our field with grass, because this has not been finalized and won't be finalized prior to our, our public hearing. So, that money will look after it. So, we know the price of a piece of equipment to maintain this? Yes, yeah. We had, we had given you that price before.
Yeah.
We actually have one of the, one of these vendors who offered it as an addition for 39, I think it's, Super Groomer, I think they call it.
But it was a service contract, not, we weren't buying the Super Groomer, wasn't it going to be as...
No, it was going to furnish the equipment, so it would be our equipment.
Oh. I thought we talked about a service contract to take care of it.
One of those two, Jim? One of those two companies?
Well, there's...
I believe, yeah. I'd have to look.
That's not the equipment that we would use just twice a year. No.
There's a cleaning.
Right. So, there's another piece of equipment that's a service that you were thinking about, Mary. So, there's two things that we would use fairly regularly, like a muller is one of them. And that's the piece of equipment that Jim is talking about. The other's service that we would have, it's only once or twice a year.
One of them's to maintain the uniformity and smoothness of the film throughout the track. The other one is actually extracts, cleans, and redeposits.
Okay. That's the service, okay. Jeannie?
I'm sorry. Could I just ask where the original gold price came from? The 900 and some odd?
Well, it came from bids. We had actually, it came from discussions we had had with suppliers. We got some numbers from the supplier that put in the curving, David White. He also does, he also does track, field installations.
Okay.
So, it's kind of an accumulation. I'd have to go back in my history and see exactly what it was.
I just didn't, didn't know if it was from the Gale report or where.
No, Gale report's more like 2 million bucks.
No, we updated from the Gale report. We did it all last summer.
So, Jim, could you set up a meeting with the committee and, or maybe work with Pim and Dave to set up a meeting with the vendors in the...
I'll be with them tomorrow.
At 7:30 tomorrow.
Oh, okay, all right.
We invited two, Mary.
Okay.
7:30.
I didn't get an invitation, so I'm not showing up. Well, no, but we can, you know, like Peter was saying, we can post it just in case other board members want to come, you know, because if we have a quorum, it has to be posted. But if you guys could set up that meeting with the vendors and let us know, that would be great. And then we'll put it on the agenda, the recommendation for the February 4th meeting. And the only other thing is making sure that's okay with the donor if we extend it to February 4th, you know, to our next board meeting. So...
I can't imagine that would be a problem.
Yeah, I don't think so either, but I just wanted to mention it, so, all right.
Is there any way, since we are meeting on Monday, to prepare for the public hearing to have those vendors meet with us then or prior to that?
That would make for a really long night, I think.
I'd really like to focus on the public.
Yeah, I would too. I mean, if, you know, if we can, any board member that wants to go to the meeting, I think can, but I think doing it at the same time as a public hearing would make for a really long night.
Not the public hearing, our work session.
Yeah.
Preparing for the public hearing.
I still think it would make for a really long night. Does anybody else want to meet with the vendors that night? No?
Okay.
Okay, sorry, Jeannie.
Just thought I'd give everybody a fair chance.
Okay.
I'd like to move. And I wrote it down, so I learned my lesson here. That the fundraising committee meet with the vendors, Progress and Quirk, and make a recommendation back to the board on the turf field, on the turf field selection.
I mean, sure. We don't, I don't think we have to vote on it, but we could, just to make it official. I think that we can just go with that plan. And it'll be recorded in the minutes, yeah. Thank you. Yeah, but that's good because then we know what the plan is going forward, so...
Yeah, so at least that'll give us a charge to go to the committee with, is tomorrow morning.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you very much, Jim. What's that? Oh, okay, do you want to, well, okay, yep. Do you want to second it?
Sure.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in...
Just to make sure that the board gets invited to that meeting.
Yep.
That's all.
Let us know the date so we can post that. Okay?
All in favor? All right, unanimous? Okay, great, thank you. And thank you for taking that responsibility, Pim and Dave and Jim. So, that brings us to public comment. And if there is any public comment, we are going to be limiting it to three minutes like we normally do. Anyone from the public wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. And I am gonna pull the retirement request from the consent agenda for non-public, just because there is at least one that we want to discuss. And does anybody else want to pull anything else from the consent agenda? Chris? December 3rd minutes, okay. Chris is gonna pull the December 3rd minutes. Anyone else?
Can I just ask why the April...
Because of the, because of the hockey program, the minutes from, the discussion from the hockey program.
Oh, okay.
Those were in the back of the pack.
And, by the way, it was clear in those minutes when I read them, and so I got back to Peter and Rob, that it was a three-year contract, so there really wasn't a reason to have Dick come and update us on that because it was clear in the minutes, so, so we don't have to worry about that. And Dick is, that's why Dick didn't join us. But is there anything anybody else wants to pull from the consent agenda? Chris, do you want to give your changes?
Yeah, I just had one thing. It was actually towards the very end, line 411. Steve Problin moved at Howard Brown. Second as the superintendent, managed the salary budget to 1.75 percent pool increase. Trying to add somewhere in there that that was for administrators.
Oh, okay. So, an administrative salary increase pool, yeah.
But it wasn't for everyone.
Yeah, good idea.
Only the ones that are here.
Ooh, where's Ron? All right, anything else?
No.
Okay. Does anybody want to move to approve A, no, so you pulled, so A, B, C, and D as amended?
John moved.
So, Steve moves. Anyone second? Powered seconds? Any further questions or discussion? All in favor? Oh, okay. All right, extensions? All right, so Pim, all in favor except Pim who abstains. Okay. And that brings us, and Dave, why don't we do that at the end? Just informational?
Yeah, fine, that's fine.
Okay.
I just want to make sure you had it.
Yeah, yep, or under informational. Okay. So, that brings us to presentations. Betty, the FY '16 second quarter report.
Do you want to do, before we do that, would you like to do the security? And that would give the advisory finance committee time to meet downstairs.
Oh, yeah, actually, I thought they'd be back by now, but yeah. Okay, let's, let's do that. Okay, so, security at Sohegan, and yes, and Jim, you're up again.
Anyway, so, the issue was security at Sohegan High School, and basically, I believe this centered around securing the rest of the building as far as access during school time.
Can I stop you for a minute? Jim, I, my concern is that this discussion should probably be in non-public since we probably don't want to let the bad guys know where we have some vulnerability. That's just my, my recommendation.
I don't have a, I don't have a citation to go into non-public.
I don't know, but I really feel like that's pretty essential.
We could, we could do it in public without the cameras. We don't have a citation under 91A to go into non-public for that reason, but we could do it in public without the cameras.
It'll take me about five minutes to find it, but...
These are, these are the, this is it.
There's a way, there's, there's an allowance in 91A for security discussions, but I can't whether it's broad or narrow.
Yeah. I think it's, I'm trying to think, it's more...
Here we go, consideration of matters related to preparation and carrying out of emergency functions.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's a, that's pretty broad. It's a broader...
I think it's narrow to emergency functions. I don't know.
Security, in my mind, is emergency preparedness.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that. I mean, I, you know, I don't want to keep Jim here all night, is the only...
I think that I can handle it.
Okay, okay. What does everybody, well, what are everybody's thoughts? Why don't we just kind of go around? We don't need to vote, but I mean, as far as going in, putting this off to non-public at the end of the meeting, Steve?
So, over the years, the many, many years, we've discussed the state of security of the building. Before, we had the locks and all the other stuff. We've never done it in non-public before. So, I don't, I don't, I think the precedent is, we talk about what we need and we do it in public.
Okay. Anybody else have any other?
Obviously, I disagree. I really think in these times when, you know, we just don't know what people know or don't know about the access to our building, that, that we need to be doing it in non-public.
Dave?
I, I really do agree with Jeannie. You know, there's no point to, you know, I don't, the only, Betty thinks she can cover all the discussion of the locks and stuff. It only extends our time. The only thing that's being added is our discussion about whether it goes to non-public or not.
Howard?
I agree with Steve. I think that information that they'd want to know, they could, they could find out by just sitting across this parking lot and write down times that they see somebody walking in and out without keying in. It's not, to me, it's not that important.
Chris?
Yeah, I think we should stay in public.
Okay. Okay, we'll stay in public then and talk about it. Jim, you do want to go ahead?
So, we're talking about access security within the building. I shouldn't say outside of the building. But anyway, what I was asked to do was look at what it would take to secure the building more so than it is right now. So, what I put together in, in the first statement there is what would presently exercise, which means the building is probably locked up from 6 o'clock roughly till 6:30 in the morning. And then all the exterior doors are unlocked from 6:30 to 7:45 for staff and students to arrive. At 6:40, at 7:45, the doors are re-locked, with the exception of the main entrance to the foyer by the office. The cafeteria entry bank of doors, if you know which series I'm talking about, that's the main doors between the annex and the main building. And the two annex main entrances are also unlocked. So, looking at two scenarios here, one of them is the cost to add locking the main reception office and foyer area during the day. That would require the installation of a camera and monitor for the visitor, for the visitor to be viewed. Require the installation of two-way intercoms so the receptionist could talk to whomever was out there and find out what their business was. And the installation of a magnetic striker release so that once the receptionist was satisfied with who wanted to come in, they would close the door and they could open the door and come into the building. Otherwise, it's locked totally. Added to that is the 3M intrusion delay window film that we have put on all the other schools. That actually minimizes the person's ability to break through a glass window by up to a minute and a half or greater. We have some video of that. You can see it on YouTube anytime you want. Look up 3M films. Anyway, so, total there, we're looking at about $63,000, $6,300 to secure the main entryway foyer in the office area. The second item is how do we secure the main cafeteria bank of doors? And how do we secure the two entryways in the annex? If we lock those up, the students can't get in right now, period. It would require the addition of at least two wireless readers at the cafeteria banks of doors. And it would require the development of access cards for all students and programming for those at about $3.50 each. The combination of those two items would be about $6,000. And what we would be required, what would be required is each student is carrying a proximity card, same as the staff does now, and they walk up to the door, to the access, and it would release the door and let them in. We're only adding, each door right now has an access for ADA people. So, we would add two more to the cafeteria entryway, just so we would have three doors capable of handling the traffic between. And there's probably five or six doors actually on that bank. But when you think about it, that same level of traffic going in to the, in through the cafeteria entrance there is the same level of traffic that goes through two doors going into the annex right now. So, it should be more than adequate to do that. If we wanted to do more doors, we're probably talking $1,500 additional in each door we want to do. Now, there's some speculation here being that we, the price of doing that was based on some door changes we made a couple of years ago. John and I have talked, there may be a way of wiring this so that we don't need multiple wireless releases, that releasing one of them is gonna release the bank enough for the people in and out, so... But the annex does not need to be changed in any fashion right now. That can be locked, and with a pass card, proximity card, they could get in and out right now with that. So, those two steps would secure the building during the school day.
So, total about $12,300?
There are issues with those pass cards and students using them. A much better solution, obviously, would be an enclosure. The pass cards for students, you know, sometimes they might leave them home or leave them anywhere. And so, that, you know, we certainly can give you the cost, but there are issues around that particular solution.
Didn't we have an estimate from Gale Associates as to what an enclosure would cost? And it was pretty costly.
I looked it up, it was pretty steep.
Yeah.
I believe it was $180,000. I can't remember.
I know it's over $100,000.
Yeah, it was definitely over $100,000. But, yes, it is steep. But that, that, for the security, that would be more appropriate than, than this number two solution.
So, I don't understand that this isn't really a recommendation? I mean, this is not really what you would recommend, or are you not committing to that?
My recommendation would be that the front foyer be done, if nothing else is done. That the front foyer entrance should be secured. If it's recognized as a main entry, that that we should secure, at least. Even if we want to leave the other one open, I think the main entry to the office space and so forth should be secured. I think the main entry, the, to the office space and so forth should be secured at least.
It, it would help us, because it is recognized as a main entry, it is where people come in and out, it would help us monitor who will be coming in and out of the building in, in a way that we don't really do, you know, have a way to do now.
Steve?
Is that 3M film, is that just for the, the main entry foyer? Does that kind of front each building as well?
It's, it's, my price is based on, on the, on the main four doors. There's four doors on the, by the office, right? Side windows and so forth up here.
Community council is not a part of it.
I'm thinking about the, the front of the building.
Oh, no. No, that would be quite a bit.
But the, the film is interesting because it's also reflective. So when they're sitting in their desk, could, could see somebody out there they can't see in.
Jimmy, do you, do you recall how much the, um, the middle school?
Eight thousand.
Eight thousand, so probably...
That was the middle, the full suite of the middle school, side panels.
We have it at the other school, so if you're interested in seeing it, you can go and you'll see, you'll see it. It looks like a mirror almost, you see out, but we, you can't see in when you're outside. They can see out.
It was the whole middle school bottom floor was done? Is that what you're saying, for $8,000?
The doorways.
Oh, okay.
The main...
The main entrance.
My thought is we have...
It's quite a bit bigger than the main entrance that you have here, but Steve was asking about the front door.
Right.
I think it would be somewhat comparable.
Yeah, it's comparable with what we did at Wilkins. We did the four-door section at Wilkins, got a couple of side windows, and that took care of the full front of Wilkins, so there's no way to see in or...
My, my thought on our building is that we have so much glass and so many windows, I mean, right next to the front, or next to the main entryway now is a big glass window looking into the principal's office, you know?
Yeah.
Which is just as easy to get into as the doors, I think, or maybe even more so because there's two doors, there's only one window there. Sorry, Rob, but...
Right.
Well, I'm just, I mean, I, and I don't, I'm not, I don't mean to point out the, but I mean, along our student services office, there's gla, I mean, so that would be a lot of money probably to put it on all of the...
I'm thinking, and I apologize, I had to step out, I just, by three groups, I had some, I had some information they were looking for. There's a lot of work in, so I apologize if I'm going over a couple of things that were mentioned. There's a lot of work being done with incident command group, we've been audited by Homeland Securities, et cetera, so I'm wondering if the board feels comfortable to concentrate some of this...